As quickly as we can. I'm gonna have to be able to defend the message.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. We're just gonna be quick back. Just get the audio.
My apologies. I think.
For the Thursday, March 12th morning meeting of the Big Ben Community College Board of Trustees. Melinda, could you help us with the roll call, please?
Thomas Stradwick?
Here.
John Lane?
Here.
Stephen Batten?
Here.
Eric Brand?
Here.
Monique Richards?
Here.
Thank you, everyone. Would you please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance? Veteran Michael Veru will lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. My service is in Big Ben. I don't have any previous veteran service, I'm sorry. So, we have an interesting time that we're in, in Washington State, a nation. And you are seeing it play out today in the arrangement of this room. Social distancing is now a thing. And so, the Board of Trustees and our leadership team are demonstrating that. Even the seats that you are in are distanced from the normal environment in our regular meeting space. I appreciate that you're all here today. This is a time of unpredictable change, and we're evolving every minute, every hour, not only here at Big Ben, but throughout the country and the world. And so, I appreciate your patience. A couple of items real quick. If you're a presenter today, please go to the podium so that the microphone system can make sure that everyone is capable of hearing what you have to say, because what you have to say is important to all of us in the room. Secondly, our agenda is slightly different than the norm. Our next item of business will be to address probationary tenure. We are going to go into executive session for about 10 minutes on that topic. Then we will come out and act on tenure. And once that's complete, we will recess for 15 minutes to celebrate tenure and the achievements of those who are granted tenure today. So again, I appreciate all of you being here and being willing to go with the flow as we go a little off our normal recognizable script. That said, we're going to return into executive session for 10 minutes for the purpose of evaluating personnel. So the next item of business is acting on the renewal of first and second year contracts and then also the granting of tenure, just for process, so that we're all on the same page. Trustees, you have this motion document for each of those contract renewals for first and second year. You have this motion document for the granting of tenure. We will start with first and second year contracts. We will move through them one at a time, and we're going to share the duty of all the motions. I will not be making motions. We'll start with trustee Stradwick, with Teresa Cowill.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Trustees, after having given reasonable consideration to the recommendations of the Probationary Review Committee, Dr. Lees and Dr. Humphreys renew the probationary contract of Teresa Cowill at Big Ben Community College. I further move, Board of Trustees, Director President, to notify Teresa as soon as possible of this decision that her probationary contract for the academic year 2020 through 2021 will be renewed.
I second the motion.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Trustees, after having given reasonable consideration to the recommendations of the Probationary Review Committee, Dr. Lees and Dr. Humphreys renew the probationary contract of Johanna Doty Fleming at Big Ben Community College. I further move that the Board of Trustees, Director President, to notify Johanna as soon as possible of this decision that her probationary contract, the academic year 2021, will be renewed.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried.
I move that the Board of Trustees, after having given reasonable consideration to the recommendations of the Probationary Review Committee, Dr. Lees and Dr. Humphreys, renew the probationary contract of Rhonda Kitchens at Big Ben Community College. I further move that the Board of Trustees, Director President, to notify Rhonda Kitchens as soon as possible of this decision that her probationary contract for the academic year 2020 through 2021 will be renewed to be effective September 14th, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Trustees, after having given reasonable consideration to the recommendations of the Probationary Review Committee, Dr. Lees and Dr. Humphreys grant tenure to David May to at Big Ben Community College. I further move that the Board of Trustees, Director President, to notify David May as soon as possible of this decision that his probationary contract for the academic year 2020 through 2021 will be renewed.
Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Trustees, after having given reasonable consideration to the recommendations of the Probationary Review Committee, Dr. Lees and Dr. Humphreys, renew the probationary contract of David May to at Big Ben Community College. I further move that the Board of Trustees, Director President, to notify David May as soon as possible of this decision that his probationary contract for the academic year 2020 through 2021 will be renewed.
Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Trustees, after having given reasonable consideration to the recommendations of the Probationary Review Committee, Dr. Lees, Dr. Humphreys, we renew the probationary contract of Michelle Reese at Big Ben Community College. I further move that the Board of Trustees, Director President, to notify Michelle as soon as possible of this decision that her probationary contract for the academic year 2020 through 2021 will be renewed.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Trustees, after having given reasonable consideration to the recommendations of the Probationary Review Committee, Dr. Lees and Dr. Humphreys, renew the probationary contract of Jessica Strickland. I further move that the Board of Trustees, Director President, to notify Jessica as soon as possible of this decision that her probationary contract for the academic year 2021 will be renewed.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Trustees, after having given reasonable consideration to the recommendations of the Probationary Review Committee, Dr. Lees and Dr. Humphreys, renew the probationary contract of Christy Welch at Big Ben Community College. I further move that the Board of Trustees, Director President, to notify Christy Welch as soon as possible of this decision that her probationary contract for the academic year 2020 through 2021 will be renewed effective September 14th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. We will now move to the motions to grant tenure.
The Board of Trustees, after having given reasonable consideration to the recommendations of the Probationary Review Committee, Dr. Lees and Dr. Humphreys, grant tenure to Sarah Bauer effective September 14th, 2020. I further move that the Board of Trustees, Director President, to notify Sarah Bauer as soon as possible of this decision to grant tenure and that her contract for the academic year 2021 will be renewed.
We have a motion.
A second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? I want to remind all of you, as we move to the tenure granting process, that the recipient of tenure will please join the President in front of the screen before we move to the next cannon. Hearing no additional further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Sarah, congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Trustees, after having given reasonable consideration to the recommendations of the Probationary Review Committee, Dr. Lees, Dr. Humphreys, grant tenure to Erin Lymphicum effective September 14th, 2020. I further move that the Board of Trustees, Director President, to notify Erin as soon as possible of this decision to grant tenure and that his contract for the academic year 2020 through 2021 will be renewed.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Erin, congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, with great pleasure, I move that the Board of Trustees, after having given reasonable consideration to the recommendations of the Probationary Review Committee, Dr. Lees and Dr. Humphreys, to grant tenure to Zachary Olson effective September 14th, 2020. I further move that the Board of Trustees, Director President, to notify Zachary as soon as possible of this decision to grant tenure and that his contract for the academic year 2021 will be renewed.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Wonderful.
I move that the Board of Trustees, after having given reasonable consideration to the recommendations of the Probationary Review Committee, Dr. Lees and Dr. Humphreys, grant tenure to Terry Pyle effective September 14th, 2020. I further move that the Board of Trustees, Director President, to notify Terry as soon as possible of this decision to grant tenure and that his contract for the academic year 2020 through 2021 will be renewed.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Terry, congratulations.
I move that the Board of Trustees, after having given reasonable consideration to the recommendations of the Probationary Review Committee, Dr. Lees, Dr. Humphreys, grant tenure to Maria and Mariah Vickney effective September 14th, 2020. I further move that the Board of Trustees, Director President, to notify Mariah Vickney as soon as possible of this decision to grant tenure and that her contract for the academic year 2020 will be renewed.
A second. Okay, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Mariah, congratulations. So part of our new agenda, which is to celebrate a special occasion, is that we're going to recess for 15 minutes, reconvening at 9:45. And in the meanwhile, we're going to celebrate the granting of tenure.
We move to new employees. Sarah Bauer is going to share about the Science Olympias held at Big Ben last weekend. And we're going to do that now. We can look to the U of M to get back to your classes.
My classes, yes, thank you. Can you guys hear it? Okay. Melinda said, just real quick, but she's obviously not familiar with my work. So you're lucky you don't have a PowerPoint. As many of you know, Big Ben hosted its first ever B Division Science Olympia tournament here last Saturday. And it was, in my opinion, a raging success. But I want to share with you a little bit about how that tournament came to be, how it ended up being here. Because I think that story really highlights some amazing things and people that we have here on campus. This all really started out as just a really simple partnership between the Math Science Division and Frontier Middle School. Last year, really honestly, because I had kids in the Science Olympia tournament, in the teams on Frontier, we decided to have this partnership where math-science faculty were offering support as content experts, providing resources, and even visiting. We ended up building them like a good luck basket for their first tournament. And during this time, the Frontier's head coach, Jay Lautherbach, kind of casually said, you know, I don't know how far you want this partnership to go, but maybe, maybe Big Ben could host a tournament someday. And I said, well, that is definitely an idea. An idea, maybe, definitely not me, let's talk in five years, that's an idea. But at the end of the season, two Eastern colleges that traditionally have held tournaments let the Science Olympia Board know that that would be their last year, and they were backing out. Which made the Science Olympia Board go, how about now, instead of five years? So last summer, Lindsay Gross, the head of the Math Science Division, and Kathleen Duval, and I met with members of the Science Olympia Board to discuss this possibility and the logistics that it would mean. And I'll be really honest, I was pretty hesitant. This seemed like a pretty big undertaking, and I'm a little out of my wheelhouse. But Lindsay really encouraged me to, kind of prompted me to trust myself and to trust the people around me to step up and make it happen. So she and I then pitched the idea to the Math Science Division in August, and decided to trust their perspective and that final decision. In typical math-science way, they were excited at the prospect and had a strong belief that we could pull it off, or at least have a lot of fun trying to. At that time, Tyler Wallace came on as a co-director, which really worked out to be an awesome partnership. It turns out, we have very complimentary crazies, and so we were quite a team. He had a lot of faith in me, and I had a lot of faith in him and his abilities. He did absolutely amazing work and played a significant role in the success of the tournament. So we had pretty much spent the last year coordinating, fundraising, planning, and occasionally panicking about that tournament. Culminating in last Saturday, which Frontier coaches later told us was the best organized tournament they have ever been to. Which is really saying something if you had been involved in the process. We had eight total teams register for the tournament from Moses Lake, Silk Lake, Ephrata, Shalane, and Pasco, which meant there were over 100 middle schoolers here last week, along with their coaches and families. Students competed in the 23 events that are designated by the Science Olympia organization. So some of those were building events, they built and tested airplanes, they built and tested vehicles, they built Rube Goldberg devices, they also took content tests on heredity, orthology, diseases, and even solved an imaginary crime on campus. We had over 60 volunteers here as well, largely from our own student population. The Engineering Club, for example, really stepped up and even bought matching jumpsuits for the tournament. Each event required an event supervisor to design the event, write, monitor, and do the grading. These were largely faculty, but also included staff, family members of faculty and staff, and community members. We even had somebody drive from Ellensburg, not Lindsay Gross, a non-faculty member. After the event, I posted on Facebook about it, and a colleague here at Big Ben commented, wow, the Math Science Division is awesome. And while that is in fact the truest of statements, the awesomeness extends way beyond this division, and I really want to highlight that. Yes, nearly every single member of the Math and Science Division was heavily involved. But as were Anne Ganazi, Tom Wellingham, Gary Baker, Bryce Humphreys, and retirees like Carrie Garrett and John Peterson. The foundation housed our account and funding and helped with all of the money stuff that I didn't understand. Dina Westerman did a phenomenal job in helping coordinate the event and signage. AMT offered to relocate an airplane to give us space for students to fly theirs. And then our Aviation Department helped supervise that event. So students were flying airplanes with actual pilots right next to actual airplanes, which was just really cool. Maintenance polished the hallway in the Opportunity Center, so the mousetrap vehicles would have the smoothest and cleanest of surfaces on which to work. They also modified the Wallenstein stage to give us more space for ping pong parachute, and put out extra hand sanitizers for all the middle schoolers as well. Matt Killibrue and Tiffany Fandren took amazing photos and videos, which you haven't looked at, I would highly encourage you, they're on the Facebook page, designed our participation certificates, and served as our arbitration team in case there was a complaint, which luckily there was not. BBT downloaded specialized programs onto specific computers so that the computer-based events could run. And English instructor Sean Tuohy donated samples of his own hair to serve as evidence in the forensic science case. Spoiler alert, though, he was guilty. My favorite part of that particular story is that when Lindsay asked him for hair, she didn't tell him why. She just was like, hey, I need your hair for something. And he was like, sure. And then while he was teaching, she and I went over and there was an envelope with his hair, a hair sample, or hair samples, on his door. Which is hysterical on so many levels. You cannot help but appreciate the trust that has to exist between those two individuals where no explanation is needed. Which really highlights, I think, the major theme and success of the whole endeavor. It's trust, and the value of trust. When we have solid teams that can and do trust one another, we can do really great things here. And I am so thankful to everyone who made last weekend happen. Do you guys have any questions about the event?
I would just want to point out that the photos on Facebook were amazing, and it's a great tribute to how the staff and faculty can move evidence. Congratulations on a great job.
Just a comment, in a previous life, I was at Frontier, and I got to go to the national competition. And unbelievable. But I think to kind of encapsulate what it was, the shirt that someone had that said, I may be a D, but soon I'll be your boss. And I think that was their attitude, they're going to run the world. And what a great thing, great testimony, I just appreciate it. It's such a wonderful event, so thank you for all you do.
Yeah, I think it's interesting listening to you talk about that. It's just a great reminder of the ecosystem in this place and how interconnected all the departments are. And so I just appreciate the fact that, just even the way you're explaining it right now, and talking about the interdependencies among departments, faculty and staff on this campus, I think that's probably something that goes unnoticed, maybe too often. A lot of the unseen work that happens here, all day, every day, so thank you. And thank all of those that participated.
You ready, Sarah? Jody Bork, will you share about the Job and Career Fair, please?
Well, I'm welcome. Thank you for having me today. So last Thursday was the Job and Career Fair, 27th year that we've hosted that here at Big Ben. It was the biggest event that we've had so far. Talking with Dina, she said it's the biggest event that we've had on campus other than like when Garrett comes in and takes over the entire campus, or the science one, yeah. So it's a lot of work. We had 107 vendors this year. We do include a small variety of our local resources, and invite them to kind of participate in that event as well, since our job seekers typically need other supports while they're looking for work. So we had a wide variety of local resources from, the mobile DSHS unit was here, signing people up for food benefits and medical services. Our WorkSource partners were here on campus as well. And we had the Housing Authority, the Health Association, and some other local resources available. The coronavirus seemed to have a slight impact with a few of the employers, primarily our healthcare facilities. We had three that did not show because they were on special protocol related to that. And then we had two additional employers that also chose to not come because of the worries. But our job seeker turnout was exceptionally high. We don't really have a great way to count everybody that walks through the door, so we give them back, Big Ben bags, and count how many bags we gave out. Not every single person takes a bag, but this year we gave out 920, which is higher than usual. Typically, we run about 1,000 to 1,100 job seekers at the event, and I think this year we probably exceeded that. That would seem to be the consensus with employers as well. That we had a really great variety of individuals that were showing up, looking for work, and they were prepared. Couple other events that we had this year in conjunction with the Job Fair. Our foundation did professional headshots and got a company to come in and take those for us. And our new librarian Rhonda Kitchens was able to host some LinkedIn workshops to help individuals set up their social media. So that was a great supportive resource together so people could go over and get their professional headshot taken for that. Social media and job search networking. We also worked with WorkSource and had a couple of pre-employment workshops downtown. Beau Cole from Mitsubishi came in and did an employer perspective on Job Fair hacks and how to talk to recruiters. And Rhonda also provided a LinkedIn workshop down there as well, so that we could get more in the general public engaged with that and excited about the event. This year for advertising and marketing, we were able to use the DVR Summer Summit Pre-Ex Program, which is the pre-employment training service program for our DVR high school students that are receiving special services. And this year, they went around to our local community members in Moses Lake and gave out posters to businesses and encouraged them to publicate that for us. And they gave out about 200 posters within our community. So that was a really great community service for them, a way for them to engage with our local industry and business and get a face out in front of those business owners. So hopefully that when they come back and apply for work, that they have a greater opportunity there. And we just heard lots of comments about seeing posters around town more than is typical. So that was another great opportunity this year. We had a number of volunteers within the college that assisted with the event, as always. Classified and admin exempt. We had faculty booths. This year, we had 11 Big Ben booths total on campus for this event, which was a little bit higher than we've had in the past. And we also invited the military to come in and host booths and house them down the Sedexo hallway. And that seemed to work really nice because they were together. And then we brought in our veteran services from campus and our VSS veteran services from the community to be engaged with them right there for any of our veteran needs. So overall, it went well. The wind tore up the banners around town and off the building a couple of different times. It was a little bit frustrating, but at least we didn't have the giant snowstorm like we did last year. So moving forward, we're hoping for next year. We've already set a date for March 4th for next year's event. And this year, we had 20 employers who were unable to register because we ran out of space. So just encouraging them to register sooner. And we had a great variety of industries from local nonprofits, state, and local. Kip County PUD was here, the hospital. So just a great, great variety for the job seekers to come in and see what opportunities our community really holds. Any other questions?
Nice job.
Thank you.
It was great hearing from our employers.
Good. It was, I feel like it was really well organized this year. Each year I do it, it seems to get a little smoother than they are before. And as a result of this, we're starting to do a few industry-specific career exploration and hiring events. And in May, we'll, everything going well, in May we'll have our healthcare hiring event. And we've already had a number of individuals from related industries in healthcare because of this event, asked to be part of the future events. I do know that we have employers that come from out of state, that if we have conflicting job fairs, come to our job fair because it's so much larger than some of the other events that they're able to engage with. So I think we're building a good reputation with that. And hopefully, we can meet our recruitment needs of our businesses and get our students out there working.
I greatly appreciate seeing the posters in Adams County, including in the Adams County courthouse in Ridoba.
Good, thank you.
Any comments or questions?
I do, I have one. So as trustees, how can we support you with this?
Well, anything for, you know, if you have your own businesses that you work at, those would always be great partners to participate at the event. Any type of engagement where you're out in the community and able to let other business community members know. If we can have, one of the things we're trying to do is we're now doing onsite interviews for the employers and the job seekers when they're here. So maybe even highlighting some of those kinds of things. The biggest piece, I worry that the community's not going to show up. I always feel like I'm going to have a party and nobody's going to come. I know that's not really the case, but, and in addition, any kind of FaceTime that you can be here to help engage and let the business community know that you're here supporting our students and trying to make that community engagement. Because our businesses are now coming in and doing many more classroom presentations and things like that, but we need a wider spectrum of industry. So we have some pretty strong ties with manufacturing, healthcare, some of the STEM, the data centers, but we have more industry than that in our community. And just additional volunteers, always anything to help out. It's hundreds of hours of my time to put it on. And so any kind of extra help I can get from anybody is always greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have some new employees to introduce?
We do.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do I need to go up there and say, no, okay? I have two new employees. And Reza Sharifi is our new Industrial Systems and Automation Instructor. And he has an electrical and a chemical engineering degree from the University of Missouri System. And we are thrilled with his experience and his education to move our industrial systems and manufacturing programs forward. So we're thrilled to have Reza with us, and he started in January.
Awesome. Welcome.
Thank you very much for having me in this meeting. I'm a great college supervisor.
Thank you, Jordi.
He got here just in time for all the new Fanuc robots to get put into the mechatronics lab. So he and Gary Baker have been having lots of fun. And my other new employee is Brett Bixit, and he is our new ag mechanic specialist. He is actually a Big Ben graduate and has been working as a case field tech and shop foreman for about 15 years or so. And he's come back home. So he is going to work on our new ag mechanics program that was being supported by our NSF grant that we received this summer. So we're thrilled to have him and his experience. And he's off to Snow College at the beginning of April?
Yes, that's right.
To view their program with Ethan Tolemaker, our ag coordinator. So we will hope to get that started here shortly.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jordi.
I'd like to introduce Carl Louise Christian and Stacy Cobb. Both of them in positions with our Japanese agricultural exchange training program. Carl Louise had previously worked supporting our Title III STEM grant. She's held a few different positions in the college. As you may recall, there's been some changes with the JTP program. JEC is closing their sale office and funding a full-time position here. And Carl Louise was the successful candidate. And filling that position, she has an MBA from WSU and has had some involvement with the JTP over the past couple of years. And it's bringing lots of great ideas and how we can make improvements to that program. Stacy Cobb has been working for the past couple of years with the JTP program as well. She serves as our ag instructor with the program. And this, and last year she was a co-director of the program. And she's co-directing again this year with Carl Louise and helping Carl Louise get up to speed. Stacy has an extensive background in agriculture and holds a master's in ruminant nutrition from WSU. And has a great deal of, she's from the area and has a lot of connections that have been very beneficial for our trainees and farm tours and so forth. So we're really excited to have them leading our JTP program.
Welcome and congratulations. Is there anyone else? Okay. Next item of business is the consent agenda. Looking for a motion to adjourn. We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. And now we will move to report. First off, A and B Public Relations Officer, Kelly Starlton. And a few, Pink Boo.
So ASB has been working really hard on trying to be more intentional with the activities that we have. And so this year, one of the groups that we've tried to be more intentional in reaching are students with families. In the past, we've sponsored activities such as the Back to School Barbecue, which is in the fall, and then the Family Surfing Night, which is in the spring. And this year, we've added several more events to our list. So far, we've had Salish, the hypnotist, the movie Harriet, which was celebrating Black History Month, and Dr. Seuss Day. So we gave away Dr. Seuss books in both Spanish and English. And we gave those to students with children and grandchildren at home. And then this quarter, we're going to be bringing a mentalist in which students can bring their family. Excuse me, their family members. And with these events, we have had students with families participate, and it has been great to see and hear their appreciation of being included in these activities. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you. There is not a classified staff report, so we'll move to the Faculty Association. Donnie, are you going to represent it?
Good morning. This list is much shorter because Sarah did such a great job presenting the part, so.
Can I, can we speak, please?
I did, I didn't, I didn't speak loud enough?
Sorry.
Am I loud enough now?
Yes.
Okay, well, my list is pretty short because Sarah did such a great job with hers. So Jim's Engineering Club, Jim Hamm, the physics instructor. He did a school project Friday afternoon. They built a Rubens tube. I don't know what it is, I couldn't access the pictures in the link that was sent because it expired, but it was apparently extremely awesome. I'll tell you that. And then Sala Aben is working with Kim Garza to bring mindfulness training to campus. And quite a few faculty and staff have expressed an interest in this. So I think this is something that we're going to enjoy and benefit from. And then Octaviano Gutierrez, he's an English instructor here. He's been really busy. He represented staff in Phi Theta Kappa in an interview for i Fiber News recently regarding support for the Viking entry. And he said that the active membership in Phi Theta Kappa has grown to the point where they've outgrown their 1417 meeting space. Recently did a fundraiser for Phi Theta Kappa which involved a video game tournament, so.
Good, thank you. Any questions? Any questions? Vice President of Finance and Administration, Jose.
Good morning. Just a couple of updates. The first one for CTC Inc., I had stated July, August of 2020 to start our business process fit gap.
The latest I've heard is now that it might be May, but now with COVID-19, I don't know that that's true. But they have tried to move it all online, so they are working on that. Our federal grant at a station update, the contract has been signed, and they initially, in the contracts, they figured it would be March, but again with COVID-19, I don't know that that still happened. Update on the Workforce Education Center, we've come to agreement on a remedy for the concrete floors on the first floor, so that'll be scheduled to be done really soon. Excited about that. And on the various roofs, that closed, the bid process closed on Tuesday, there were three bidders. We had, I think, about 10 different companies that came and did the walkthrough, but we only ended up with three bidders. They were quite expensive, and I don't know yet who the apparent was. Any questions?
Good question. Doctor Dunne? Thank you. Vice President of Learning, Dr. Breckham?
First off, I just want to thank the board for their action earlier in the meeting on tenure. And again, just wanna be able to, wanna state in the open meeting that we really have tremendous, very high-quality individuals that received tenure today, and really impressed with the work that the faculty are doing, and these individuals, it was well-deserved. So thank you again for that. Couple, few other updates, as I think we shared with you previously, there was another training that the Northwest Commission put on relative to the new standards I attended, as well as Linda Schoonmaker and Valerie Parton. That was a couple of weeks ago. There were a few things that they emphasized that I wanted to point out to you. Under the new standards, there is a renewed focus on student learning, assessment work. Again, that's, we knew that was coming. They also talked quite a bit about student achievement, earning, completing a program of study, and earning credentials. And then a new focus that, a new focus for the commission is a focus on closing equity gaps. Now, this has been a focus for Big Bend for several years, and much of that is due to our participation in achieving the dream. And then there's been a lot of emphasis by the State Board, through technical colleges within Washington State, on closing the equity gap as well. So for us, that was nothing new, but it is now a part of the standard, of the accreditation standards we need to pay attention to. One thing that is of a bit of concern is it was, as I've shared before, there's been quite a bit of turnover at the commission. They're a small staff, and the leadership staff has turned over nearly 100%. There's one individual there who is a senior leader who has been there for some time. Everyone else has been there for one, either less than a year, or in many cases, a few, matter of just a few months or a couple of years. And so when you add to that the new standards and some of the things, some renewed emphasis that they're placing on things around student achievement and particularly equity gaps, there's a lack of clarity on how they are interpreting and implement, or expecting colleges to interpret and implement the standards. And of course, that vagueness leads to some, and the newness of some of the personnel leads to some question about, are things gonna go sideways for us when we have our visitor fall? So one thing that I think was good is there was some good candid discussions at the conference about some of the implications on how some of the standards would be interpreted. And we were vocal on some of those things, and there's a couple of points where the commission doesn't seem to have fully landed on how they're wanting to interpret some of these standards. And so we are actively engaged in conversation with the commission and pushing for interpretations that we feel would be, would make sense for colleges in general and specifically for Big Bend. So that's, that will be interesting to see how this plays out over the next six months or so. Any questions about any of that before I go on? The last thing that I would just say, and I know Terry's gonna talk a little bit more about this, but we, as you know, are actively engaged in planning around the implications of COVID-19 and what does that mean for instruction and delivery of student services. I mentioned JTP. We introduced Carl Louise and Stacy. We've had some active dialogue with our partner, the Japanese Agricultural Exchange Council out of Tokyo, over the past couple of weeks about how we proceed with that program. And we received an email last night, the confirmation that they have elected to, at our request, to delay the arrival of the trainees. They were slated to arrive next week, and we had some considerable concerns about our ability to house individuals who have the illness. And so they've elected to postpone that. And as like this meeting, we'll continue to see the implications of preparedness and for COVID-19 to impact the activities that we're doing, whether it be academic programs, athletics, services, and so forth. And that is my report.
Good question. Bryce, thank you for that. And when we get to item nine, Campus Safety and Security, I think we'll have some additional discussion around COVID-19.
Yeah, okay.
Vice President of Human Resources and Labor, Kim Garza.
Good morning. So just a couple of items here, in addition to what was in my written report. We did release our request for qualifications, our RFQ regarding the search for the Director of Health Education Programs. That went out last week, and I anticipate, if I have my timeline from Joe correct, I think we'll make some decisions probably after the end of next week. I wanna say that closes around the 17th, so we'll get to move forward with that. We've had some interest expressed by different recruiting firms, and I'm hoping that that will get us over this hump. That's been a really challenging position for us to draw a pool of qualified candidates for. And we did fill our music instructor position, so Dr. John Owens will be joining us in the fall, and we're very excited to have him. And so we are chipping away at some of the openings that we have. We have five more search committees that have kicked off this week, and we do have some really good timelines established. However, that can go sideways. One of our last steps in the interview process is for folks to travel, to do a site visit. And so we have discussed within the committees alternatives, alternative options for candidates if, for some reason, travel within the U.S. is greatly reduced. I wanna give you an update on a couple of significant pieces for some classified and admin exempt staff. So Heidi Bratch, who is a program assistant in our nurse education program, she has been pursuing her degree or her education here at Big Bend, and she let me know that she completed her officer certificate this quarter. She's set to do that this quarter. And then she's gonna get her administrative certificate in the spring. When I was talking with her, she and her supervisor were, there were some high fives, so that was all before we were told not to do high fives and things like that, but they were pretty excited about that. Heidi had an opportunity to work with Catherine Christian and Trudy Roy, who is our professional studies lab coordinator, to convert. They've been working on their nursing accreditation report, and so the three of them worked together to convert that into an accessible format. And Heidi was really proud of the work that they were able to do together to meet that goal. I want to also let you know about Carmen Ramirez. So Donnie mentioned that Octaviano Gutierrez did an interview with i Fiber regarding the food pantry. And Carmen Ramirez, she's our AVOD navigator, so that is able-bodied adults with disabilities. So that is a grant, grant funding that we received to support that program. Carmen actually also has responsibilities for coordinating food pantry work and donations, and she was one of the primary interviewees when i Fiber came in, and she did an excellent job representing the college. And she's also pursuing her degree, getting her bachelor's degree, and moved up through classified staff into an administrative position. So two opportunities where the work that we've done here for employees and as students has paid off for the college. So any questions about anything? Short and sweet, I'll have more later.
Okay. Thank you very much. Executive Director of Big Bend Foundation, Will Beckparton. Hey, Leah, good to meet you.
In the back. Okay, finally broke 3 million, guys. I'm so excited. Yay! So Hayden Holmes came in at 2,500 last week, and Lamb Weston came in with $100,000 donation. So they're still deciding what lab or that they want, which room they're gonna take. So we're at 3,093,052. So 82 and a half percent of gold. So we're getting there. I just wish I could say we were there and passed, but we will. And then we're still working on the leadership work group, and we have had Michael Nash in, and so we just completed our third session with him on Tuesday. So we have one more, and the folks that have gone, everybody has expressed a lot of support and a lot of things that they've been able to learn, and hopefully, we're gonna be able to apply every day, both at work and at home. So, and we were really fortunate that Michael Nash himself did the first three. He won't be able to do the fourth, he'll be traveling, but that was a real bonus. Originally, we thought we'd only get him two times. Again, they mentioned at the Job and Career Fair, Chandler brought in Trina Houston. She's from, she started her own photography business, and so she came in and did the professional headshots. And I think there was 83 headshots that were done at the Job and Career Fair. So that was well-received. She'll also be doing our professional photography for our board going forward, so we're excited that she was able to volunteer her time. And she was thrilled and wants to do it again next year, so we've already got that lighted up. And then we're preparing for celebration, the best that we can based on everything that's going on in the, Andrea Wolf. We're moving forward as if everything's gonna be fine, but we're also gonna start planning for alternatives, I guess. So luckily, it's not for a month, two months, so we've got a little bit of time. But it's certainly a concern. So, do you guys have any questions with me?
Congratulations on all the many hours and efforts you've put in on behalf of the Workforce Education Center, you and Dr. Lee, and everyone involved, and done, you know, with work.
It's been great. We do have, right now, we're planning, a donor reception would be June 3rd, so that would be the private, that'll be the wine, and then have heavy appetizers, and then the next night, we'll do the community open house with cake and lunch. So we're excited, we're starting to plan those two events, too.
Excellent, thank you. Next up is the Central Washington University presentation, Monica Madrano, Regional Director, Central Washington University, Muggs Park, and Wenatchee. Welcome, Monica.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me this morning. There are some folders that were distributed that should be next to you. Thank you for having me. My name's Monica Madrano. I'm a previous employee of Big Bend Community College for five years, and I transitioned last fall into the role as the Regional Director for CW, Wenatchee, and Moses Lake. So I split my time between both of those co-located community college-hosted university centers. It's been a pleasure to be able to work with Big Bend in a different capacity, really building out programs into the next level for our students that are achieving that bachelor's degree. So I wanted to share a little bit today about what's been happening with the Moses Lake Center, give you some information about what our plans are for the next year, and then offer an opportunity for any sort of questions or additional disinformation that you would like provided, right? So CW, Moses Lake, has been present on this campus in partnership with Big Bend Community College since 1997. There's been a variety of different programs and different routes that Central Washington University has taken at that time, and we're at a place right now where we're really looking at what is going on statewide, how can we help economic development, starting with pathways in the K-12 system that go into bachelor's degrees and beyond. So in your packets, I've shared a little bit of information about some of the programs that we have here on our campus, and then just a little bit of facts about what's going on at the center. So currently, we have several university centers around the state. The majority of our students, about 40% of our students, are receiving classes at our university centers in a hybrid capacity. We find that as well with Moses Lake, our center here in Moses Lake, it's a hybrid capacity. There's a face-to-face element, and then some of the students are elect to do their classes online. Our classes generally run Monday through Thursday, and they're in the evening hours. We did this with special consideration, the majority of our students are non-traditional or working adults. We see a large push of our students are currently working or are in their industry and looking to advance their degree. So we make sure that we keep those class times available for the working adult or for that learner that needs to commute in, that might not be necessarily right in Moses Lake's backyard or in Wenatchee's backyard. A variety of the students that we serve do come from in between Grant and Douglas County, so we see a lot of Quincy students, we see some Moses, or some Matawa students and Royal City students that are opting, they could go to Moses Lake, or they could go to the Wenatchee Center. So we're really mindful about what those commute time looks like and when we're offering classes, right? So a little bit about what's going on at the Moses Lake Center, just to give you some information. Currently, we host two programs that we do a face-to-face element. One is in interdisciplinary studies, and this is in our social sciences, and I've given you a little bit of a description about what that is. That has a very hands-on element to make sure that folks that are wanting to get that degree have the opportunity to be able to work with local industry in the social sciences. So this could be anybody that wants to be a public health educator, counseling, a variety of different areas. They work with the faculty advisor here onsite to be able to design their degree around that intended career, that finish line, that what that job is that they want. And they're working with local industry to be able to do some of those practicums, internships, things of that nature, right? And then we will be scaling the elementary education program at the Moses Lake Center that will be coming fall of 2020. So that's a K-8 program, okay? We also support a variety of different online programs, and I've shared those with you as well. What that means is students that are within the service district of the center, those online students have the ability and the opportunity to come and receive all of their services from the center. So anything for financial aid, student services, advising, anything that could have to do with their degree, they can receive that here at the center. We are also, we target them also, so we make sure that any information that goes out between the community college and Central Washington University, we keep those students informed. The top five transfer programs that we're seeing right now currently that are happening from Big Bend Community College to Central, and this could be either at the center or our main campus, are in psychology, law and justice, education, business administration, and IDS, interdisciplinary studies, and sociology. They're a close tie, they're generally neck and neck. So the intent- So the intention for us that we've been taking the last 18 months that we've been focusing on and moving forward with it is how do we make sure that those students, those students that we know that are coming to Big Bend, and that's their focus, they're going to be looking at those five programs. How can we have that warm hand up or that seamless effort going from Big Bend Community College to Central Washington University, whether it's main campus or it's here at the center? We've had the opportunity and worked very close with Big Bend over the last year plus, a year plus. Specifically, we're looking at one pathway to identify and to build out what a map or a 2+2 model could look like. We picked elementary education. It was asked through one of our leadership meetings from Vice President Humphries said, "This is an area where we know our students want to go in. They have nowhere locally." To be able to receive that 2+2, that bachelor's degree for education, is this something that Central Washington University can provide? And we met that call. We met with folks on our main campus, with our school of education, and were able to share out some of the data that showed that there would be a big response. It may take a few years to get a high enrollment in that, but that it was a worthy investment. We did a lot of planning between Big Bend and Central Washington University and then different areas within CWU to see how we could do this with virtually no risk. I would say with no risk to any one party. So we could get a yes. We wanted a yes, and we got it. It was successful. It was the fastest yes anybody in extended learning has got. So I was really proud of that. It's a big part of mine every day to make sure that we represent our counties. And so we will be scaling that elementary education program starting fall of 2020. The way we are doing this with eliminating a lot of risk to either community, to Big Bend Community College, then also looking forward to Wanachi Valley College. That program is already currently established at Wanachi Valley College. What we did was we enhanced their enrollment and included a designated amount of their enrollments to be for Moses Lake only. We will offer those courses here at Moses Lake, and we will serve those students here at Moses Lake. But it will give us room to not have to do a mandatory cohort of 25 students to be able to build up capacity, not just in enrollment. But we also want to build local talent faculty, our adjunct faculty, for the elementary education program. It gives us a couple of years to be able to build that up, but still be able to offer our students the opportunity to begin the elementary education program. That program is a 2+2. So a student has to have completed either the DTA or they have met all of Central Washington University's general education requirements. For the most part, they're coming in with a DTA. And there's a handful of prerequisites. We've worked closely with Big Bend and looking at what are those prerequisites? Can Moses Lake students or Big Bend students get those here? There are two of the four prerequisites that are offered. Big Bend is already offering, especially bringing on Michelle Reeves, and she's teaching one of those courses. We felt like we hit the lotto a little bit. Michelle Reeves was our previous adjunct instructor for our courses at Central Washington University. And she was our lead faculty advisor for the Wanachi cohort. Having her expertise in helping inform the process has been priceless for us. I think it gave a lot of people a lot of ease and comfort knowing that we could do a really thorough job for our students. The 10 designated spots that we have next year, again, those courses will be all offered in the evening. At this time, we currently have three, potentially four by the end of the week of those confirmed. We've held a couple of information sessions here at Big Bend Community College. We've had pretty high attendance on those. Out of that, about 23 potential inquiries. We will close enrollment for that. We generally close it in August. Our university center programs have a little bit more leeway than our main campus. So we're really looking forward to being able to identify different pockets and different areas where we could do some recruitment. The intention is that students that need, that want to get into that program, there will be some sort of a gap with some of those prerequisites that we are building out that map with Big Bend simultaneously so that we can inform those students, this is where you would start. This is where you close that gap. It happens at Big Bend. Or recruiting Big Bend students that are currently doing it, having them build in those prerequisites at a much earlier time so we can make sure that the time and money are saved. So this for 2020, what we're looking at is filling 10 spots in Moses Lake. That would be our junior cohort. They will roll into our senior cohort. After, at about this time next year, we will evaluate if we will increase that number to a whole 25-spot cohort. That just depends on enrollment. But that also depends on making sure that we could have local talent, local faculty that can support the students. We're very committed to making sure that if we're going to deliver a program, we're going to deliver the entirety of it. The whole student needs to be served. So can we bring student services? Can we make sure that there's accurate advising? Can they be placed for their practisms? We want to make sure that we're being very considerate and mindful to the students that are coming from Big Bend and going into these programs so that they have a whole experience without some brints and some choppiness. We really want to be respectful and mindful of that relationship. So that's what we have looking forward. Launching that, those five top transfer programs, it is our intention to model a lot of the same situation that we did with building out those maps for the top five transfer programs. We're not going to be able to offer all of those top five programs, and some of them wouldn't be able to be offered here. But those top five programs that Big Bend, we see Big Bend students transferring to Central, we want to make sure that we're working collaboratively with these advising teams that are part Central and part Big Bend to build out maps that would be for advisors. They'd be to inform students. They'd help with recruitment. They'd help with enrollment into these programs. But they are collaborative. They speak language that the students of Big Bend have already been used to. They've become accustomed to. We would share responsibility to do some professional development around these pathways. So all of this is in... I wouldn't say it's in its infancy, but we're still very new in building these out. I would like to say and share, I'm very proud that this... Of our extended learning centers, Big Bend is the one that we're piloting all of this with throughout the entire state of our co-located community college campuses. And it's because of the efforts of leadership to help us be in the know and to share resources and to share folks and to share time. That's been extremely helpful. So we look forward to building out more opportunities. Right now, like I said, we're holding fast to those two programs, interdisciplinary studies and elementary education. Other ways that we see Big Bend and Central Washington University working collaboratively at this moment, there are several members from the Moses Lake community, Grant County, and from Big Bend that serve on our advisory board. Those are two-year terms with opportunity to be extended. And so there's some folks, Linda Doherty as an alumni student, and Bryce Humphries as representative from Big Bend Community College that are on that advisory board as well. So there's additional information. I did leave my contact information with you. I would be happy to come back and report out if there's specific information that you all would like to know or anything of that nature, or if you'd like time to come and visit the center. We're just right around the corner. But it's... There's complex, and there's layers and whatnot. So I'd be happy to host you in whatever capacity. Are there any questions?
Question. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Next item is Campus Climate Action Plan. BP conversion.
All right. So I want to provide you with an update on a few other things that we've been working on. So Linda Sepasalsberry is the consultant that we have, who has been providing the executive coaching to the executive leadership team. And she was here on campus on March 6th. So that was just on Friday, last Friday. So when Linda first started working with us, one of the things that she asked us to do consistently was select several employees and to connect with them to do these one-on-one meetings, these interviews, to gather information and to really repair relationships. And at our meeting on Friday, we talked about moving to the next level. And we introduced the idea of leader rounding. So leader rounding is designed to, again, deepen relationships. But rather than having kind of the employee come to you, as a leader, you're going out into a department, a building, and you're really connecting with the employees that work in that area. And so we want to continue to make personal connections to deepen those relationships. Some of the other pieces that come from rounding is it's our responsibility as leaders to make sure that people have the tools and equipment that they need to perform their work. So getting firsthand information about that, really taking opportunities to recognize and recognize folks for their achievements. But I think even more so to thank them for choosing Big Bend as an employer every day that they come to work, because that's what they're doing. When people get up in the morning and they come to work here, they are committing to the organization, again, that they want to serve and fulfill the mission. They want to support that. And really to... Also to gather information about ideas for improvement and how we as leaders can remove barriers for those process changes or things that are going on in departments or in the organization. How can we help really, rather than be a barrier, remove the barriers so people can do their best work here? And I think through all of this, recognizing that in order to serve the students at the level that we need, our employees have to have the tools that they need. And that also means support and how we show up as leaders every day. So we spent some time talking about that, sharing some information, and made a commitment that between now and the time that Linda comes back on April 17th, we are going to go out into departments and do some rounding. We have some very clear questions that we're going to ask rather than just going out and saying, "So hey, how's everything going?" We have some scripted questions to really get that information to help strengthen those relationships and have a better understanding of what it's like to serve students on the front lines. So I think that while it's not specifically mentioned in the Campus Climate Action Plan, it really connects to that goal number two around recognition and deepening relationships and will help us, I think, do a better job of managing up, getting the information from faculty and staff and recognizing those employees who are out there and really making a difference for our students and for each other as internal customers. So other areas, Leanne mentioned the NASH training, which was completed. And that's been a really positive thing. I don't think I've had anybody tell me, "Oh, I really hate it that we have to go to this." People are walking away with lots of pearls of wisdom and I think greater connections with their supervisors, their colleagues, things like that. A challenge for us, as it is for any institution or organization, is how do we hardwire those pieces that we learn, those nuggets that we learn in the sessions? And I think an example of that, this last session, we spent a great deal of talking, a great deal of time talking about performance conversations. And I'm not going to get the last two letters right, but there is an acronym, BERTH, so behaviors, impact of those behaviors, replacement behaviors. And I'm not going to get the C and the H unless somebody wants to shout it out.
Consequences and how do I help?
Consequences and how do I help? So that's a great and easy way to help a new supervisor or a seasoned supervisor approach a conversation with an employee. And one of the things that, in order to hardwire that in, so we're really employing those concepts here at work, we provide training to new supervisors on how to resolve performance issues. And so rather than continue with the same kind of curriculum or slides that we've used, taking that information from that and embedding that in that content so that folks who start here as new supervisors recognize that that's now an expectation of performance, for their performance moving forward. So I think spending some time on the backend and taking out those pieces and figuring out where we can embed those, that's really going to make the investment pay off in the long run. So that is something that we'll be moving forward. We also have our three work groups are continuing to kind of fulfill their responsibilities, their assignments. And I believe all are online or in-line to have those done by the end of the academic year. I do want to point out, I had a great conversation with Tammy Napianik. So Tammy leads the Onboarding and Orientation Work Group. And so she shared that they spent a great deal of time doing process maps. And I'm using my arms because there were these big things of brown craft paper that have sticky notes on them where they have really outlined the whole process, all the steps of the process for onboarding and orientation as they exist, and converted that to workflow and swim lanes and all these kinds of things that make absolutely no sense to me because my brain is not wired that way. But they've really drilled down into the process and have come up with recommendations on different components of the orientation and onboarding process and where those things should occur to provide the best experience for that new faculty or new staff member, and both from a full-time or part-time perspective. So that's really been a positive. And I think as they get those flushed out, there wouldn't be any reason why we wouldn't share those with you. So you can just kind of see the work, because it's really impressive, the work that they've done, thinking about how to make this work from a customer's perspective, so to speak. So they've also provided some really good feedback regarding the 90-day survey that we've had. Rather than having one 90-day survey for a new employee that has a ton of questions, breaking that up into smaller chunks. So we're going to implement that and get that going. And then also continuing to work on that checklist, what happens on the first day of orientation for a new employee, first day at work, whether they're full-time or part-time. So Tammy's here, and she said she would be happy to answer questions about onboarding and orientation if you had them. But I think the amount of work and the engagement that we've seen from faculty and staff in each of the three work groups has been amazing. And so I just want Valerie and Fabiola and Tammy and Leanne to know that I really appreciate the work that they put in because if it was not for them, we would not be at this point. So thank you. Questions?
Anything you wanted to share with us?
It has been interesting to see who is interested in participating. I think that that has been the biggest eye-opener for me. And I would say that the thing that has come out of this is really wanting to make sure that each type of employee has their separate experience. So it's really drilled down and specific to what type of employee they are. Some things I was sharing with Kim is that one of our recommendations would be that if this were to continue next year, that there's a large interest in continuing to develop this process specifically for faculty. And then also having this more online so that there's the capability of having a workforce so that people know when their time is up, when they... Or when they need to show up, they have a participation piece. So yeah, I really appreciate getting these pieces.
Thank you for that.
So I know there's, I think, three or four indicators to evaluate how effective all this is going, right? And I think one of the indicators had yet been determined around some sort of assessment or survey you guys were going to look at to identify, how do we know if this is working? Have you guys identified that assessment or survey tool yet?
So we have pulled data from, I want to say Matt helped pull some vendor information. So we've looked at some survey tools. And we made a conscious decision at the cabinet level to put that on a back burner until that new president is here. They may have experience with a specific tool, but really felt it was important that they be involved in that process to select that tool and how we would move forward with it.
Thanks.
Any other question? All right.
Oh, I ran away.
Thank you. The next item is campus safety and security. And before I end that off, the President Lee, this is involved in the two topics. So specifically, campus safety and security and the climate around that and how that may or could be impacting student success. We're additionally going to discuss what is Big Bend currently doing and planning to do with regard to COVID-19, based on all the evolution that has occurred in the last 24 hours even. President Lee?
Thank you. So there have been three issues concerning campus safety and security at Big Bend that we've really been focusing on. And I want to go over those briefly today to give you an update on what we're doing and what we plan to do. Some of these issues have been raised in department meetings. Some have been raised through meetings between representative groups and the college administration. And then also have been raised... And then also have been raised in the recent survey of our employees regarding campus safety and security issues. And I believe Lynda sent out a copy of the results of that survey. And I think there are two documents, it's a little confusing. One document gives you basically all the questions and I think the aggregated information. The other one gives you that plus the individual comments that were written by respondents. So if you're like me, you'd go to that second document rather than read one document and then go through a lot of it again. So the three issues are, of course, COVID-19, student misbehavior, and concerns about facilities. With COVID-19, you know, in Grant County, we've had one positive test. Unfortunately, that test did lead to a death. And our employees and students are understandably concerned about the threat of this virus. College officials are meeting regularly to plan for the worst case. We've started to use elements of our emergency management plan. We're using incident command response structure. We've, you know, the worst case would be if we get an employee or a student on campus who tests positive. And some of the things we're looking at, of course, are migrating from in-person, face-to-face classes to online classes. And struggling in some areas, what to do with programs that don't lend themselves to online delivery like Well Day. And JATP, Bryce talked about that, working with the JAC officials in Tokyo to delay the start of that program. Biggest challenge for us, as Bryce noted, is that if we have the JATP trainees in our residence halls, someone becomes sick, we are limited in our ability to isolate that person. And if they're not ill enough to go to a hospital, we don't have anywhere else for them. We haven't been able to get any hotels, motels to agree to take any students. So we're still trying to research how to deal with international students. And then on top of that, we have a number of out-of-state students that come to us from as far as Hawaii and New York. And so Luis Alvarez has been working with Lynda Kyle and trying to figure out what we can do with students in a worst-case scenario. We've focused, and Matt Kilbrew has been doing an outstanding job of helping us maintain regular communication with our employees and students. We have regular emails, messages from me. And then those messages are, I send them to the employees and the trustees, and then Matt sends them to all the students. He also posts them on our website. There's, if you go to the COVID-19 page, then you see that there's these chronological order of messages. He also posts them on social media. And has been doing a good job of putting up posters that are relevant to COVID-19. For example, on the doors, you see the posters reminding us of covering our coughs and sneezes and washing our hands. There are three days a week, Monday, Wednesday, Friday mornings, WAC is meeting at 8:00 AM for a telephone conference call to review what's happening within our state system. We have some of our institutions, sister institutions that have had positive tests and having to isolate, quarantine people and what they're learning and how they're dealing with that. So we're trying to learn from their experiences as well as any guidelines that we get from the state board. Are there any questions about COVID-19?
For COVID, can I go back to campus safety and security, please? Do you mind?
Oh, you want me to go ahead and go the next one?
Because you talked about the survey that was put out.
I'm sorry?
You spoke about the safety survey that was put out?
Yes.
So the trustees just received that this morning?
Yes.
It's a 40-page document if you haven't seen it yet. Can you speak to the feedback that we received at the last board trustees meeting with regard to concern about increasing safety concerns on campus and what that may specifically relate to or what's causing those?
I'll get into that when I get into the next section on student misbehavior.
Okay.
I do have a question on sort of the topic of COVID-19. So do you identify thresholds that trigger specific responses for the college campus? So when will you know what you need to do at certain junctures in the road?
We have been talking about that as recently as yesterday, depending on the scenario. And we're going to be doing some tabletop sessions to deal with those different scenarios and how do we respond?
So what are some of those thresholds that trigger a response?
One would be like the recent employee who was voluntarily self-quarantined. So you have someone who thinks they might have been exposed, not showing any symptoms, and quarantined. How do we deal with that? Well, we immediately did deep cleaning of the instructional area where that person had been teaching and then informing employees and students, trying to see if there's anybody else, you know, who had been in contact and alert them that this person has voluntarily quarantined. Are there any?
So I would also say that it's hard to establish a specific, if this happens, we'll do this. Because it is so fluid and because it's changing constantly. We had information last night, new information again this morning, and something just a few minutes ago. I think it's very situational and it depends on what it is that occurs. But we have looked at what our responses would be and if they are working.
And I think it's, sometimes it's downright confusing when you get cautionary advice from the governor, from the health district, from the CDC, you know, limit gatherings of 250 or more. And yet, then in the other hand, sentence a no need to close the college or close schools. So there are some mixed messages coming to us. And we're trying to sort our way through that with somewhat inadequate information. There's not a lot of testing in this country like there has been in other countries. So we don't really have a good understanding of just how extensive this virus is through the population. Not an excuse. And so we're trying to be cautious without being too disruptive of services that we provide.
Terry, based on what the health district released yesterday, I think they're calling it the Public Health Recommendations for COVID-19, that their recommendation is strongly to suggest that in Grant County and the neighboring counties, that we all observe the governor's position on no events, no gatherings of more than 250 people. Has that, have you had time yet internally to have a discussion about that and see how that impacts the college?
We have had those discussions. And we've had groups cancel their events that were larger than 250. So we've had cancellations from a group that would have been as large as maybe 1,700 on our campus. And then smaller groups have been canceling, like the Grant County Economic Development Council's annual banquet, that kind of thing. So even though they're maybe not quite up to 250.
And E Team's going to meet right after this meeting.
Again, during this meeting, we received a notice that the N WAC is holding a conference call tomorrow to discuss athletic events within their region. And so I'm certain that that is, you know, the, or they can hold them or not or they can allow people to participate to come and observe. So that's planned as well.
I know the, I think on the news this morning, the NCAA, or maybe late last night, the NCAA is moving to like basketball games with no audience, which sounds really creepy. And then, but other sports that are played on a field, like baseball and softball, are okay. They're apparently not restricted.
The Seattle Mariners are not coming home to play their opening game.
Majorly baseball is just discontinue operations.
So National Hockey League, National Basketball Association, they've suspended their seasons now. City of Spokane yesterday announced that it was adopting the 250-person rule. So everything scheduled in the Spokane Convention Center is canceling. So I mean, there's, we had, our health district officer in Adams County is the same individual as the Grant County Health District Officer. Yesterday, the Othello Sandville Crane Festival, which is next week, was canceled after a very firm recommendation from the doctor that that action be taken before the health district officer has to start making enforcement decisions, closing large gatherings. So I think it's evolving quickly. And the recommendation is to err on the side of caution. And I'm guessing that at some point, there's a trigger point here for Big Ben around sporting events, around student-based gatherings, that we just, I think, would like to know when and how those things get addressed. Additionally, you know, the recommendation now is to, you know, take these steps even though it seems not to be bad here today, based on the rapid growth of the number of cases in Washington State.
I think if the board meeting would have happened today, we both would have probably already had messaging now. I sent everything out at 5:00 this morning. And all these people initially sent this this morning to the, because I'm sure shortly after there's will have messaging that goes down. We've already had a pre-discussion. So we're going to probably keep the recommendations of the health district when we step out of the meeting room. So we're doing that directly after this.
And you see with the JATP working with the JAC to delay the start of that program is a way that we're dealing with that, with those students? Any other questions?
I would just say that, you know, I think we appreciate that this is a rapidly evolving situation. I think you've kept as reasonable as all informed with the email updates you obviously are putting student needs as well as employee needs first. So thank you for those.
Any other questions?
The second category of safety and security issues involves student misbehavior. We've been receiving reports from one of our programs. It serves at-risk youth. And this is our Open Doors Youth Reengagement Program. This is a program that was enacted by the state legislature through House Bill 1418 in 2010. And it's, in layman's terms, it essentially establishes, or gives school districts the authority to establish a different kind of alternative school within the district area. And so the school districts can contract with other educational institutions or they can contract with non-educational organizations. And it is a program that's designed to serve disengaged youth ages 16 to 20. These are individuals who have not fared well in the K-12 system. They lack adequate credits to graduate from high school on time. And so the school district will contract with other groups like Big Ben Community College to serve these students. We've had a contract with the Afrida School District for three years. We've had a contract with Moses Lake School District for two years. When we started this program, we literally had a handful of students. Today, we have approximately 270. So there's been a tremendous growth in this program, really unexpected growth. And with that, knowing that this is an at-risk group, they come to us with many challenges. That in turn presents some challenges for us. So they are often low-income. As I said earlier, they haven't done well on the traditional high school model. They need credits to graduate. What we're seeing is that the majority of them, they come voluntarily because it really is up to the student for the most part to come. They tend to do well in our program. Those who are more or less coerced to come or forced to come, like, you know, maybe someone that's in the juvenile criminal, juvenile system and they're, you know, being made to come because that's a part of that intervention, can struggle in the program. But in most cases, this program is the last hope for these individuals to complete high school. There's also, some of them have gang affiliations. And when you think of all these at-risk factors, this is a really good example of why we need to be student-ready. Because they are who they are. They're coming to us with the particular backgrounds that they have and over which they have little control. The concerns have been several. One is there are some unsafe student behaviors or behaviors that make people feel intimidated or employees feel intimidated or threatened. And other students may feel that way, too. We're seeing the appearance of graffiti that we've not seen in the past. There have been some fights between students. And sometimes we think those fights are predicated on students from rival gangs. All this has made some employees feel threatened and intimidated. There's also suspected drug use among some members of this population. Then there's the sense of a lack of protection for employees or students. In the past, there was this concern that there was no scheduled presence on our campus for security staff during periods of instruction. No scheduled presence of administrators in the areas that concern arises. A lack of training for faculty and staff in the A lack of training for faculty and staff in the program, and lack of clear, consistent guidelines for reporting incidents. So we have a, we've had meetings, staff meetings, we've had a variety of ways of addressing this. And so what was asked for was that we provide training on Big Ben policies and procedures, the student code of conduct, and safety-related topics. And one thing we've done is, at the winter in-service, we provided a workshop on child abuse. We, in January and February, we had tabletop trainings on responding to student health and suicide. And our safety and security department is going to conduct quarterly tabletop trainings on other topics. We also provide access to prior training for employees who could not attend or participate in those earlier trainings, and we're doing that through our Big Ben Community College YouTube channel, and we're also using Canvas for the instructional side. Future trainings, we, March 20th, we're gonna have a mental health first aid training. Our dean for transitional studies is working with the Grant County Sheriff's Office to provide training on gang-related behavior. The dean is also consulting faculty and staff to identify other training topics of interest to them. We're continuing to develop a training course and resources in Canvas for faculty teaching in our basic education adult programs. And we're investigating additional resources, like the Student Threat Assessment from the North Central Educational Service District. Regarding the presence of campus security and administrators, beginning March 9th, trained security personnel are now scheduled to be present when classes are in session. Obviously, that's not a guarantee that they can be there all the time, every time. Sometimes there may be a crisis, an incident that they have to respond to in another part of the campus, but at least they're being scheduled, and we're being very deliberative about this. Also, on March 9th, either the dean or a director are scheduled to be present when evening open doors, classes are in sessions, so that there is that administrative support in the evening. Of course, college officials remain committed to ensuring a learning environment that is conducive to learning and safe for students, employees. I talked earlier about some of the things we've been doing to improve communication with the COVID-19 topic. And in this topic, we've, are improving communication by having weekly meetings with the faculty and staff, the adult education director, the dean of transitional studies, and these are opportunities for the employees to raise and address concerns and seek resolution. And then notes are being prepared and then housed on a portal so that employees who are not able to participate in those weekly meetings can consult and see what was covered and decided. Another issue, of course, was that there was some need to perhaps either get people up to speed on Big Ben policies and procedures that are established, and those would be done through training. But there's also policies and procedures that maybe haven't been finalized, or because of the newness of the program and the rapid growth and the challenges that have emerged that we've not had to deal with in the past. What we're doing now is, the dean for transitional studies is drafting either policies or procedures, sharing them with the faculty and staff, giving them an opportunity to review, comment, and revise those, that language. And then they will adopt and implement the final version of these policies and procedures that need attention by the beginning of spring quarter. And the dean is also using those weekly meetings to provide training on policies and procedures so that there's, if there's any confusion about who do I report this incident to, those kinds of practical details can be resolved. And then, of course, the dean will work in collaboration with faculty and staff to update any existing policies. Are there any questions about those issues?
Trustee Strider?
So can you speak to the after-hours security presence on campus? Is there one? What does it look like? How's it different than the daytime security presence on campus?
I'm gonna, that's under Linda's area. I'm gonna let her address that.
So until we get the shift change for our night security, who starts at seven, Kyle is covering the five to seven period. So that's what we have up until seven. James has been with us for 20 years?
Probably.
Yeah. Very familiar. I visited with him last night in the parking lot. And then he's on until middle of the night. And then we have various part-timers that cover the rest of it.
So there's 24-hour coverage?
No, not always. We don't have enough part-timers to necessarily fill that in. So we do have times that aren't consistent, because we don't want to be consistent without a security person. We do have times in the middle of the night where there isn't any kind of security.
But during those times in the middle of the night, there's no set, classes in session?
Correct. Correct. And then we have resident advisors, six of them, one on each floor inside the residence halls, who carry this. One of them gets designated to carry the cell phone call.
And should we have events here?
Should we have events here, then there is security scheduled, whether it is our security or outside security. So currently have it scheduled to cover for when there's instruction, and we do have instruction Friday, Friday evenings and some Saturdays, that we do have something scheduled to do.
But are we fiscally, and has there been any question about the need for expanding the amount of security staffing that we have in place?
Yes, all the time. It's high on the list. It's one of the higher priorities on our list of personnel to hire, where to shed money. We've got to get that money so we can get there.
Any additional questions? Okay.
Just regarding the Open Doors program, is that a pretty consistent service offered by other community colleges, or does that need to honor our area?
Bryce, you want to answer that, or Linda?
I would volunteer that at Culver Park, we had the A1, which is similar to an Open Doors program, from the Culver Park School District on our campus.
It is common amongst many community colleges. Not every college, community college in the state has an Open Doors program, but it is common that many do. And the, what is, we're seeing more and more of is a blending of the, of this, or the use, these programs using the High School 21, High School Completion Curriculum, so we're blending that High School Completion Program for these at-risk youth, using the same curriculum and procedures and whatnot, is what we're using with adults. So yes, it is, it's quite common.
And we think at Big Ben that this is an important program, consistent with our mission, because if indeed this program is the last hope for these learners, we can get them in, and they can be successful in this program, we can get them into our developmental and our college-level programs. And let's face it, we can't afford to lose anybody. And if they're not successful in other venues and they can be successful here, we want to give them every chance. But as far as, I think it's safe to say, as far as campus security issues, misbehavior issues, this program has become an outlier, and it's really spiked. And of course, we're, you know, trying to make sure that we deal with that in a way that protects our employees and students, and at the same time, if we can help these students change their behavior, it's not the majority, it's a few, and that we want to be able to do what we can. There have been cases where, because of the behavior, the infractions, violations of the student code of conduct, they have been excused from the program. So we do take that step when necessary.
Okay, so that kind of goes into my next question. You know, given the unique features of this program and a little bit of difference between our general student body, is that general student code of conduct adequate? But it sounds like if you are processing it, then is your opinion that it's adequate?
Yes, and there have been times where we've had to have law enforcement come on campus and deal with violators.
Specific to that question, so the code of conduct that the college has is adequate to cover that, and what you typically see, what is common in colleges, is the, there's one code of conduct and it's applied to all types of students. Now, what we often see in many programs is a, are program-specific policies and procedures that are not, they're not conduct-related, but they do provide some more, some additional framework around the program. So for instance, our aviation program and our nursing program both have program handbooks where there's, it may be dress code or academic progress, things of that nature that are expected for the students to be successful in the program. And so we have, we have some of that that we have in place, and that we're continuing to develop relative to this Open Doors program as well. So to give a couple, for instances, that you could see these types of things in a program policy, so there are program policies, procedures. You could have something about attendance, for example, and punctuality, and even dress. I've seen in similar programs where there's a prohibition in wearing clothes that could be seen as showing gang colors, for instance. And if a student wears that, shows up with that, then ask them to go home and change or to use them for the day. So these are, these are types of things, they're not code of conduct violations, but it's more a structure of how that program operates and some additional guidelines to help the students be successful in the program. And so as you talk to, you know, specific needs for the students, then you would see that are above and beyond what's in the code of conduct, you would see that in this, these types of policies and procedures.
Any additional questions?
So these classes are held all over the campus, or are they in specific location?
So currently, they are in one location. And so that's another conversation we're having, is as we have the, bring the workforce ed building online, Lynn and I have begun those conversations, we're having to move some classes of a variety of types, classes, offices, things, around the campus. It's a bit of a chess game. And so this is one of those programs where we would like to be able to move them entirely out of the Opportunity Center, whether that be ESL, Adult High School Completion, Open Doors. And so what are appropriate, what's appropriate locations, because I don't see us putting everything on one spot. What are appropriate locations we put in place that's going to meet the education, the learning needs of the students, provide the structure that they need to be successful, and that's good for the entire campus, not just the students in one program? So how we're balancing that out. And so those are, and like I said, there's, it's not just Open Doors, there's a variety of other programmatic issues we're working through as we talk about the locations of programs and courses. And some of this becomes especially important in the evening, because there's, you have fewer space demands in the evening. And so we've had conversations about consolidating some services and classes of a variety of types in particular buildings for safety reasons, but also for learning and support service reasons. And so that's another element to the conversation, is what do we need to do during the day versus in the evening? And, because it's not necessarily a mirror image of day to evening.
Couple other questions along the line. Is someone who is suspended from school, public school, are they eligible to attend classes here?
So the, I'm gonna give a short answer, is if they've been suspended from the school, then no, because these students are part of the school district. The way that the legislation sets this up, each, under Moses Lake School, or X School District, you have a variety of schools, the high school, the middle school, elementary schools. Open Doors is set up on paper and functionally as a separate school under the auspices of the district. And so we are a contractor for the district to provide the education. And so, and so those rules that the district has would apply. It also means that the students are only in Open Doors if they are placed here by the district. So we don't recruit or go out and try to pull students into the program, it's only when they are referred by the, by the school.
The next question would be, are these kids special ed or 504s, and how is that addressed?
So there are some of them, again, going back to the WACs that govern this, the school district is still, is responsible for providing special ed services to the students regardless of where they're at. And so if they're in the program, the school district still is responsible for providing those services. And so part of our, we have regular communication work with the school district on this, and so when they send a student over, then, then we are working and putting together plans on how they are providing the personnel to provide the special ed services. And that, I believe, that that was very intentional in the wording of how, when the WAC was created, that this did not become a dumping ground, if you will, of special needs students. And it didn't absolve the school district of their responsibility to serve them.
And the final question would be, with all these additional concerns, are we still making money out of it?
So the, so there is revenue that comes with them, with the students. And so one of the things that we're working on is the right size of the program, right size of the program and right sizing the staffing with it. There's adequate revenue to hire the staff, the personnel that are needed to serve the students. If it was something where we, they didn't come with the resources to teach and support them, we couldn't continue to offer the program, because we don't have other resources to put into it. And so the, is, the personnel and the resources that are supported entirely by the revenue that comes with them, that comes through EPOSPI to us.
So it is making money?
So currently on paper, it's making money. I wouldn't say a ton, but it is making money. And while instruction is still trying to figure out what's the right size, what we need to have in the void, but we're not contributing anything to it in this.
But, you know, if you're talking about, the hedging that you're hearing from me is, we're figuring out the total cost for that, okay? And so there's adequate funds to cover the costs we've incurred and to incur additional costs, but say, you know, it's making money. But say, you know, it's making money as X percent revenue or whatever. We're not in a position to, to make much of a statement about that because we still haven't finished figuring out the total cost for the program. But, but the way that we've approached it is we've, we have grown our expenses that were occurring with the revenue that's coming in. So as Linda said, we're not exceeding expenses beyond that.
I don't want to get in the weeds too much, but is the contract set so that it could be adjusted?
The contract is a boilerplate contract from, from OSPI. And so basically it, all the wording is already set and you put in the name of the school district and the name of the contractor. In this case being the college. And that's it. And so it's, it's very prescriptive and OSPI has some, regulates what the responsibilities of the school district and the contractor are quite. It's quite prescriptive, quite closely articulated, clearly articulated.
So I guess one question, I'm struggling to reconcile a couple of things that I've heard.
And so this will get to a question for you, Dr. Lee. I'm hearing from VP Schoonmaker that, you know, maybe there's, so there's a funding issue potentially to hire additional security staff or support personnel. But then I'm hearing from VP Humphries that this program pays for itself, it pays for the faculty and staff required to support it. So the question for you, I guess, is do we have the, from your perspective, the adequate resources to ensure. A safe learning environment for faculty and students?
That is what I've, we've been exploring and I'm not sure that, you know, when Bryce talks about not having all the. Costs versus revenues, but it seems to be to me, it seems that we do. Have enough revenues, but I think we're still studying that.
So we're, we're tracking that now and have been for a little while so that I can get some of those.
So if I could add on that, so I guess what, one of the things that I'm asking is this program is stressing. Some elements of the campus resources in terms of staff, namely around security. So if it, if the contractual agreement generates X amount of revenue. Is there enough revenue from this program to add additional security force? To ensure that we're absolutely taking all the steps necessary to protect the entire campus.
So, so I think we also don't want to. Start a police state in this program. I mean, we're, we're trying to balance that fine line. And so we don't, we don't station anyone in any one particular place on campus. They're roaming and they move around. And I, I think we went through a period where there was. Some identifying gang activity and members and those folks are gone. That doesn't mean we still don't have classroom behavior issues, but some of that is classroom management and not student conduct.
I guess I would say the short answer to your question is two things. One, I want to go back to the statement about we are, we are building the infrastructure around that. Security is certainly part of that. But as Linda said, how much is security, how much is classroom management? We feel, we have the resources, but we're figuring out where we need to allocate them. In a way that makes the most sense, both for the program and for the campus overall. I know that, that's a general statement.
So somewhat like COVID-19, this is fluid at this moment and I appreciate that. I agree a hundred percent with you that this program goes directly to mission. I just think where we are is that what we had for feedback at the last trustees meeting, some of the feedback since that meeting. Wanting these trustees to be assured that we're doing everything that we should need to. We know that you are making those efforts to ensure a safe environment for everyone that's on this program. I appreciate the ability to ask a number of challenging questions.
Well, thank you. One, one statement clarification is that what we've learned in working with our faculty and staff. That some employees are, feel more intimidated and threatened than others. So you get this range of, some people say, hey, I don't, I don't feel the least bit. I was at a staff meeting and I had some of them say, it's not a problem for me. And maybe they had more experience. What I'm sensing is that for those who don't have the experience, don't have the training for dealing with these issues. Then they are uncertain and they feel vulnerable and that's understandable. So that's why there's such an emphasis on training to help people. Understand and deal with these issues. Okay, last thing, facilities, real quick. Basically boiled down to two buildings and concerns about inadequate lighting. You'll see that come up in that survey results in the comments and that's our new building. The Workforce Education Center, 3700. There were concerns expressed about inadequate lighting at night. And we discovered that the west side entry light was not connected. And the PUD had a light pole that was not working. Those were taken care of within a few days and that was actually back in last September. Kim, when was the survey administered?
The safety survey?
Yes.
It was just a few months ago, it was a statewide survey that went out.
Yeah.
So that, so the state annually collects that information and then Kyle was the point of contact. But I would say it's been within the last thirty to forty-five days.
And, and so what you'll often see in those kinds of situations is you may read the report. And there are these concerns and you're thinking, oh my gosh, you know, everything's going to heck in a handbasket. And in reality, because of the timing, it's already been addressed. So I just want to reassure you that we've addressed the issues with the concerns about 3700. And then concerns about the evening classes and the lighting at the 7700. There have been expressed concerns about not enough lighting at night. We've checked our records, but there have been no work orders placed for. Lighting or, you know, to follow up on that concern to initiate our maintenance and operation staff. We've done and we're continuing to do researching and assessment of needs around that building. So far, using our other buildings as benchmarks, that building has equal lighting. So we really need to, to know more specifics if we need to make. Responses to, to that.
So is my question then with, who would, so if somebody, if a member of faculty has a concern, what, what is the mechanism for reporting that to admin? Would they be placing a work order or is there some other process?
So any employee has the ability to generate a work order. The links to do that are online. So some employees may do that, some may tell their supervisor. And so I would say depending on, for faculty, you're asking specifically about faculty?
Yeah, or staff.
So staff would likely talk to a supervisor, they may feel like they could just submit the work order directly. Faculty could talk to their dean or their division chair. They also may put the work order in. I think it would depend on, probably depends on what the issue is and how long the person has been here. Whether they feel like they could just call up M and O and say, hey, I have an issue or they work through the process.
So is that, is that information that's communicated, especially with security issues? Like if you have a security issue, please contact your supervisor. Is that information that's been thrown out?
That, I alluded to that about those weekly meetings that the, that will be reinforced about those kinds of reporting issues. Particularly because we have new employees all the time. I believe they get that as part of their onboarding, but it, it helps. Sometimes you get overwhelmed by all the information, so it helps to reinforce that periodically.
Are students able to do the same thing? If they go to a faculty member and say, hey, I noticed this, would they get the faculty member to press ahead and report it?
That's probably the easiest way. I don't, I'm guessing, I don't know that students have access to the. The links to report, they could. I, I would say to Teri's point, so with, about a year ago, we included like a half day, about three hours. Of connection between Kyle and new full-time employees. One of the challenges that we have is we really don't have a good structure for onboarding our part-timers because they work other places. And in particular, the programs within transitional studies have the highest number of part-time faculty. As compared to other programs on campus. And so that really is an opportunity for us to figure out how to get that same information to them.
So another question on campus, are there, is there signage around campus that says, if you don't feel safe, do this? Or reach out to this person or call this number? I mean, is that? I'm going to get into the whole, like, should we do that? But if I was walking around on campus and late at night and something happened and say I'm in the parking lot and my car has a flat tire. Is there a number?
Yes.
On campus, okay.
Yes.
On every door of every building.
That's what I thought, but I'm like, I'm just oblivious when I walk in, I probably don't pay attention unless it was an emergency.
And, and students get that orientation as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
In fact, I believe Kyle says pull out your phones right now and enter this number.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Lee.
Thank you.
Item number 10 is a new board policy, 1025, statement on equity, diversity and inclusion. This is for review, Counselor Mary Ann Zavala Lopez.
I have a few more minutes to say good morning still. So I know Melinda asked me to present some information to support what we're going to talk about this morning and to be brief. And in respect of your time, I promise to do that. So my name's Mary Ann Zavala Lopez, I'm a counselor here at Big Bend. And I just wanted to start by saying that, you know, as the college strives to provide a learning and working environment that is equitable, inclusive and diverse. The community on equity, inclusion and diversity, which is CED. And as you might recall, back in April of 2017, CED became a standing committee. So CED has remained committed to assisting the college in these efforts. As the work continues to develop, we recognize the need for a board policy to offer guidance relative to the issues of supporting. Your end statements of inclusion and climate. So the language that you see in your packet that you have in front of you is an accumulation of many voices. So members of CED, the employee, Big Bend's Employee Experience Work Group and voices at a couple of, at least a couple of shared governance meetings. So significant editing of this document occurred last year, 2018, 19. And what we recognize is that approval of this board policy specifically stating that using the statement on equity, inclusion and diversity. Would certainly guide the services, the programs and instruction. Provide, provides a common understanding, so common language around the terms equity, inclusion and diversity at Big Bend. Much of what we heard today with some of the reports had to do with accreditation, with, had to do with the campus climate, had to do with student success. And I think this is timely that we're having this discussion now and that you're able to review this to support and align. The language that really goes with our day-to-day work and of course, student success is top of our list. And so we're thankful that you have this on your agenda today.
This is well-written from my perspective and I encourage you to pass on my thanks to everyone who's played a role in getting this down on paper. And to the moment where it's in front of us. Trustees, do you have any questions?
Can you just kind of explain how you gather the campus feedback and let that process flow?
CED, the representation on CED is, first of all, we have students who have served on that. I think it's usually at least one, sometimes two students have been a part of that. We have faculty and then we have classified staff and in our, and admin exempt. And so in our admin exempt, we have someone from your senior leadership, Vice President Kim Garza, who serves on that. So we think that's a broad representation, the employee experience is equally broad as well. But I think most importantly, valuing the fact that everybody's voice is important and that's how we got to hear. Those, the employee experience group and CED met separately and then collectively chimed in to be able to edit and proof and make sure there were, again, that there was that common understanding. And then we took the information to shared governance and there was, you know, some good discussion and it didn't happen just once. It wasn't just representing the information and everybody voted and approved. There was quite a bit of dialogue until we got to the place that made sense for everyone. And basically made sense for us at Big Bend because again, we're looking at how this plays out in the classroom, how it plays out with an employee, how it plays out with new programs that we, that we bring to campus and so on.
Thank you. This board policy will return to the Board of Trustees at our next regular meeting for action.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to use this opportunity now to recess for a short break. So 10 minutes max and then we will get back to it.
The issue of, do we approve this without the revisions, um, that have not been developed to the board job description, or wait for that? My recommendation would be to adopt the changes currently within the board policy, especially as they are out of line with the accreditation standards. Um, and it's just, again, because of the presidential search and it taking precedence, I, I don't anticipate that we're going to, as a committee, even have something in the near future. So that would be my recommendation to approve the board policy, 1,000 changes as included in the agenda, and I would make that motion to adopt those changes.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All right. Hearing that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you for your work on this. Um, I do realize there's a lot of moving parts for these trustees. As a result of presidential search, good choice. Item number 12 is presidential search, so I guess as our crowd in the room dwindles, the, uh, the update I can give you is that we have completed two candidate site visits. Uh, Suzy Ames at Lake Washington Tech and Sarah Tweedy at Westchester Community College in New York, wrapping up the visit in New York, uh, last Friday, or Thursday afternoon. And we're headed to Yakima tomorrow for Teresa Rich would be, which would be our third and last finalist for campus site visits. We are scheduled for Thursday, March 26th, to gather for executive session and deliberations and a potential selection decision. One item of business that I know that we wanted to check in with trustees about, um, in the incident in the president, pres, presence of COVID-19, um, Melinda on our behalf did talk to Dr. Teresa Rich yesterday. We can offer you an opportunity to attend via Zoom if you do not want to make the trip, if you want to avoid going on campus in Yakima. I can also say that Yakima has not had any campus-related diagnosis, no self-quarantine, and Dr. Rich also assured us that the entire room and space will be operating in, is and has and will be sterilized again. And it is immediately adjacent to the parking lot where you're going to park. I am going, because I feel like I must go to be present. But it is up to each individual trustee whether they are going or would prefer to stay back for Zoom. So we need to have that discussed.
Well, thank you for making those options available. I am comfortable with attending in person.
Thank you.
After surviving New York, I'm comfortable attending also.
Thank you.
Uh, I would prefer not to drive, but I am comfortable attending.
I don't think we have a train available.
No subway.
Unless we get the short line to figure out a way to get the freight train there. Thomas?
I'll be attending.
John?
I'll be attending, and I want to make a comment. I kind of self-quarantined myself last time. It worked out very well. I appreciate Melinda's help, and, uh, it was good. It wasn't like being there at all, and I think it is important that we show the possibility. I will be there.
Excellent. I think, um, it, it's actually in the, in the land of fairness to Dr. Rich. It is, it is the best decision for us to be there, so I do appreciate that. Uh, Melinda has asked that if anyone is carpooling with anyone else, please let her know with regard to being able to track travel expenses of the trustees. I do not have anything else with regard to the search process, because that's really where we're at. Trustees, do you have anything that you want to raise or discuss? Okay. So let's move to item 13, which is president's onboarding process. I'm handing that to Trustees Dredwick and Fran. Who wants to jump in?
I would hand it to Trustee Fran, because we're on a roll.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, so what's included in the board agenda is just kind of a draft, um, of the onboarding. I don't think in the process that we necessarily need to finalize that today. I think it's actually good for everyone to kind of take their time to review it. I also intend on sending this to the president of CBC, since she's recently joined a campus to just kind of get her perspective and recommendations. Um, the committee met with Dr. Lee to discuss this, also in, in view, in light of his experience on the campus. And so that being said, um, something that, for all the, the trustees to be mindful of is, um, just like we had with Dr. Lee, where we had those site visits kind of out in our, our communities and the service districts, um, to kind of identify the, the members of those communities. And so I broke it into the group, or we broke it into the groups of school district representatives, local government representatives, industrial representatives, and then just your civic organizations like Rotary and those other types of, um, groups that have prominent community members. And that gives the new president the opportunity to visit all the, the larger communities of the service area and make those connections. So if anyone has the, uh, a personal connection with those communities and has ideas for that, it would be good to kind of start to fill these in with who those people are so that we can really set these up, um, within a, a shorter time window within that first year, basically, so that that president has the opportunity to make those connections. Um, also, that being said, just kind of if there's any individual introductions to civic organizations, as well as legislators and other, um, individuals that'd be kind of outside those groups, that's built into that schedule. Um, so be mindful of those so that, so that we can get those set up, um, and, and started within that year. I did also talk with Linda Sepa Salisbury on timing. Um, she recommended, uh, that, that, the leadership training kind of be after a period where the board and the president get to know each other. So I, I guess I'm a little concerned that our August retreat is maybe too soon, as well as does that allow for sufficient timing to have that? So I would probably be moving that leadership training more out to the 90-day to a year period outsider retreat. I think that will give the, us the opportunity to have that first retreat where we do our board work and kind of have that process, and then use any maybe lessons learned in that to facilitate that leadership training. So with that, I will open it for general comments and other discussion.
Then just another data point that was helpful for me to understand. So there's the onboarding that's proposed here. In addition to it, there's the standard on-campus onboarding that every employee gets, um, as well as the ACT onboarding, I believe, is what Dr. Lee has shared with us. So there's, they're going to be well-onboarded by the time they're on-boarded.
Yeah, and I think with that, because there is that internal, uh, onboarding process, that this is always intended to be more of a flexible document. Um, and then I think it'd probably be a good process to review this with the new president once they're on-board. So if she wants to make any changes, we can kind of move that, this into a framework that is, that works for her, too, whoever that candidate may be.
Any other questions coming? I just want to thank you both for the work that you've done. I'm a big fan of you sharing this with the president of CBC for feedback. She was quite helpful when John and I met with her, and it is a, it will be a living, breathing document even at the point of implementation, once the new president is on the ground here at Big Bend. to check with you and I got sidetracked, but I wanted to know if you were interested in another.
I am not. I'm close to the end of my trusteeship, so I think I'm going to be involved here.
Are there any other trustees who have an interest currently in a nomination to fill the ACT board position? I don't see anyone jumping up voluntarily. Notice? Nobody's looking except Thomas. Thomas gave me an eye to eye.
Yeah, that was an eye to eye, no.
That was definitely a no. Okay. Moving on to item 15, assessment of board activity. Trustee Richard, it's your turn.
Okay. So since our last board meeting, our last special board meeting, I attended the Transforming Lives Dinner in Olympia on the 17th and then the ACT Winter Legislative Conference as well. And then, of course, actively involved in the presidential search on February 21st and March 4th. And I did all of those things, in addition to meeting with the onboarding committee.
Tenure review, two candidate visits, and agenda planning with the president on March 3rd.
Ditto.
You weren't at my agenda planning.
Ditto for non-chair activities.
Right. Thomas?
So all the same, the only addition I had at a meeting with Beth Laszlo related to my work, just on some workforce partnership opportunities with the PUD, Big Bend. And just can't say enough about how helpful she was, willing to identify some creative solutions to some of the challenges that we have in terms of upskilling current workforce and really looking forward to some of the partnerships in my day job with the community college.
Excellent. Thank you. Item 16, next regularly scheduled board meeting at this moment is set for Thursday, May 7th. Anyone have a question? My calendar rapidly becoming open based on the cancellation of every trade show event. I'll be here. President Lee, miscellaneous item.
Again, thank you for the award of tenure to our five faculty members. They really are, I think, a bright future for the college and the students that we serve. And in your package, you've got the ACT event schedule. I'm sure there's going to be casualties to that schedule. I think I saw yesterday that the ACC, ACC National Convention was canceled. So yeah, it's a different world, new normal. And I think I'll conclude with that.
Okay. Trustees, does anyone have anything miscellaneous that they'd like to talk?
Just wanted to mention that Markfold is being inducted into the NWA Hall of Fame and what a great honor and will serve. If they still have it, I might consider attending.
Okay. I do want to remind you that our itinerary for Friday is at your desk box, including your parking permit, which I believe is the last page, and a campus map, which is page two. We are set to begin at nine o'clock. And it does sound like we might be skating and skiing a little in the ice and snow later in the day, if Mother Nature has her way. I want to thank you all. I want to thank you all for asking great questions today, but also for being troopers. And I want to thank the campus communities for being troopers through everything that has been going on and everything that is coming. Certainly Leanne, I realize Celebration could very well face a substantial challenge. And if there's any way that we can assist or help you, certainly chime in, let us know. If you have all the moral support we can throw your way.
From a distance.
Six feet minimum. All right. No other business to come before the board. Getting adjourned.
I'll help you drink leftover wine, though.